All right, we have a suggested motion that the board return to open session.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klemkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young? Mr. LaFever?
Aye. All right, we're up to the recognition's portion of our agenda. For that, I'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Cates.
Thank you for joining us this evening. We're pleased to have you with us. This time, I'd like to introduce Associate Superintendent Dr. Lisa Small to introduce some students who have accomplished some great achievements in the recent history here.
Thank you, Dr. Cates. Board of Education, thank you for taking the time tonight to join us as we honor some wonderful students who are going to be introduced to you. Family members, I ask, as your student or child is introduced, please stand so we can also congratulate you on their accomplishments tonight. Helping present the students tonight are Framed High School Principal Kurt Teniper, Schaumburg Activity Director Michelle Napier, Hoffman Estates Principal Josh Shoemaker, and we are going to kick it off with Schaumburg Boys Gymnastics, Eric Bostrum. Eric completed his 15th year of coaching, the last eight of them as the head gymnastics coach at Schaumburg High School. His teams have advanced to the state tournament the last five seasons, and Eric is a proud graduate of District 211.
All right, thank you. And I'd first like to thank the Board of Education and all the administration tonight for allowing us to recognize and honor our wonderful student athletes. Just a brief recognition of our team this year. The two young men that I'm recognizing tonight were the core part of our team and the success of our advancement to state over the last couple of seasons, and have been on a tremendous run. And we're lucky enough to have them for a couple more years, so we look forward to some more success over the next few seasons. Their contributions have been immense, and leadership has been incredible. So we're really fortunate to have had these young men on the team. First, I'd like to call up sophomore Oscar Kulajja, who's accompanied by his mother Isabella. Come on up, Oscar. Oscar is a sophomore who last season also advanced to state. This season, came back after a pretty significant injury, and so he worked hard to recover from that, and was a conference and sectional champion on multiple events, a state qualifier on multiple events, and made it to finals on the pommel horse and parallel bars, where he placed sixth on pommel horse and placed and medaled third in the state on the parallel bars with an incredible routine. So, great job, Oscar. And next, I'd like to call up junior Brandon Nyborg, who is accompanied by his parents Lance and Sue. Brandon also unfortunately faced his share of near-career-ending injuries and fought back in a big way. His determination, grit, and drive never cease to amaze me in and out of the gym, and he's just a tremendously hard worker. And that paid off with Brandon's ability to also become a conference and sectional champion on multiple events, advanced to state on every single event, which is six in men's gymnastics plus the all-around. So a total of seven events that he advanced on, and was able to make state finals on floor, rings, and high bar, where he placed sixth on the high bar and was able to medal fourth on floor and third in the state on rings. I'm extremely proud of both these young men, wish them the best in future seasons, and I know that they'll do Schaumburg and District 211 proud. Thank you.
If Palatine High School Principal Tony Medina and Athletic Director Jerry Dobbs can join me, as I introduce Joe Parks, our Palatine High School Girls Track Coach. Joe Parks has completed his 11th year of teaching physical education at Palatine High School. He's been the head cross-country coach there for the last 10 years. His team has brought home three state trophies, a state championship in 2009, and two second-place finishes in 2010 and 2014. He has been honored twice as the Illinois Cross Country Coach of the Year, and he is this year completing his eighth year as the head track and field coach. Joe?
All right, thank you. I'm going to call over both ladies at the same time here in a moment. They're both seniors. We have Jess Streepie on the right with the blonde hair. She's here with her parents, Jason and Gina. And we have another senior, Erin Olicksack. She's here with her parents, Jo and Lisa. And these two ladies have been a massive part of our program the last few years. They've been top state-level athletes pretty early on when they came to our program. Both were all-state athletes last year. Jess here on the right here was two years in a row now. She's been all-state in the pole vault. She's been multiple high-placers and point scorer for many invites and conference meets with being primarily specialist in the pole vault. She is going to continue her athletic career at the University of Illinois in Champaign next year. And she did all this too. The last year or more, she's battled some shoulder and upper arm issues. If you saw her at a meet, she's got this pretty funky contraption. For her to go out there and compete with that has been, just shows her character and her toughness. Over here on the left is Erin. Erin has been and just really evolved into really one of the top athletes in the state. When she first came to Palatine, I had dreams and hopes of her being a distance runner. She proved us wrong. She became really one of the top sprinters and definitely short hurdlers in the state. She was fifth last year, and she topped that this year by getting fourth in the state. She ran 1421 and smashed our school record. She's also a barely-accomplished soccer player. She's going to be attending Marion University in Indianapolis, and she'll be competing both in soccer and in track and field. So, thank you, ladies, for your commitment to our program and for your successes.
Next, I'll introduce Matt Imes, the Hoffman Estates Girls Track Coach. Matt has been teaching special education at Hoffman Estates High School since 2005. He's been coaching the girls' cross-country teams at Hoffman Estates since 2006, and the girls' track and field since 2017. Matt?
Thank you, Dr. Small. Dr. Cates, Board of Education, thank you for having us tonight. It is my pleasure, my honor, to introduce the five ladies that we brought over from Hoffman Estates tonight. The five ladies that I'm going to talk about briefly were the rocks of our program this year. Overall, we finished 12th in the state, and it was because of the fine women against the wall there and their performances that carried us as far as we did. So first, I'd like to introduce Makaya Blackwell. She's here with her mother, Danielle Pickett. And I'd also like to acknowledge Coach Moran, who worked closely with Makaya for the last two seasons. At the state meet this year, Makaya was all-state. She had an all-state finish of fourth place with a throw of 42 feet, seven and a half inches. She's two times all-state. She was also 11th in the discus. She threw 122 feet and 10 inches, which is a fantastic throw for her. And I understand in the fall, she'll be attending NIU. All right. Thanks for your time. The next four ladies were part of our record-setting four-by-eight-two-mile relay squad. First, I will introduce Janay Dean. Come on up. Janay was our leadoff and part of the relay team that finished second in the state with a time of nine minutes, 12 seconds, I'm sorry, nine minutes, 12.26 seconds. We were a half-second away from being state champions, but it was a wonderful experience at the state meet. And Janay led that off with an incredible 800. Second, and Janay will be returning next year as a senior, so we have another year of Janay. So we're looking for more and more of the same. Even faster. Second, I'd like to introduce Nikki Wrong. She's here tonight with her mother, May Wrong. Nikki, another instrumental part of that relay squad. Ran that 800 all year long, and she initially, when she came to us, she was going to be a sprinter. And we're glad she wasn't that fast in sprints. So, turned out to be a great choice for her to run the 800 and cross-country with us as well. So Nikki will be attending North Central College in the fall, running track and cross-country. Next, I'd like to introduce Michaela Palmer. Michaela also ran the four-by-eight and the 800 all season long. And all the ladies here, as the season went on, the times just got faster and faster, and we would always tell them that it's the end of the season when it matters the most. And they definitely came through that day. Michaela will also be attending NIU in the fall, running cross-country and track as well. Lastly, I'd like to introduce Anna Miller. She is here tonight with her aunt, Erica Schrader. Anna, the anchor leg of our four-by-eight relay squad. Anna is a four-time state medalist now between the four-by-four and the four-by-eight. She will be attending Emory Riddle Air Nautical University in the fall. Thank you.
Jeff Williams is our Framed High School Boys Track Coach. Jeff Williams has been a psychologist at Framed High School for the past seven years. He has coached football at Framed and has been with the boys' track program for the past seven years. The last two as head coach. Jeff?
I'd like to thank the Board and Administration for taking the time out of your meeting to recognize these wonderful young people who have accomplished so much as student athletes. The two athletes that I'm about to call up were captains for our team. They helped lead our team throughout the year. These are two athletes who spend not just track season, working on getting better, but spend the entire year working on leadership, helping other student athletes, and really creating a great culture in our program of being successful as students and as athletes. The first athlete that I'm about to call up is Justin King, accompanied by Grace and Steve King. Justin is a very highly-decorated athlete in our program. As I mentioned, one of our captains. He was a conference champion and sectional champion in the 110 high hurdles, the 300 hurdles, and the four-by-fourner relay, which he anchored. He took that performance into state, qualified for finals, and finished fifth in the 300 hurdles. He's going to be continuing his academic career at Michigan State. Nice job, Justin. And the next athlete that I'm about to call up is Lucas Fissinger, accompanied by Jamie Fissinger. Luke is someone who, as a junior, just missed out on an opportunity to qualify for state and compete at the state meet. And when he came back into our offseason program and the first day of track, we could tell just how hard he worked to accomplish his goals this year. And it really paid off. At one time, throughout the season, he was one of the best pole vaulters in the state of Illinois. He had a very difficult injury at the very end of the season, which did not allow him to compete in conference. But I could not be more proud of him coming back in the sectional, placing second only to his teammate in that with that injury, continuing to work hard and really achieve and represent our program in an excellent fashion at the state meet, finishing seventh in the pole vault. He will be continuing his academic career at Missouri University.
Vito Anzalone is our Hoffman Estates Boys Track Coach. Vito is entering his third year of teaching mathematics at Hoffman Estates High School. He just completed his second year coaching cross-country and his first year as the head coach of boys' track and field at Hoffman Estates.
Thanks for having us today. Here with his mom, Sarah, and brother KJ, is Jonah Walton. It's been a pleasure coaching Jonah these last two years, as I've seen him grow not only as an athlete but as a young man. I could only describe him as an energetic powerhouse that knows how to rise up to the biggest challenges. Only a sophomore, Jonah's confidence and poise under pressure is what makes him stand out against his competition. The best memory of the season was when Jonah was running around before a meet, telling everyone he was going to jump 6'8", and the best he'd done that season was six foot. Well, he went out and he did it in the most dramatic fashion, and the whole team celebrated it, and it was an incredible experience. He very well deserved his fifth place in state this year with a high jump of six foot, five inches as only a sophomore, and we are looking forward to a very bright future for Jonah.
To recognize graduating high school seniors who have excelled academically, who have clear goals and purpose, and who have demonstrated excellent character and a giving spirit, the Daily Herald sponsored its 18th annual academic team. Out of 17 public and private high schools in the northwest suburban area, District 211 had three representatives named to the 10-student academic team. For their commitment and character, these students were featured in a special section of the May 30th Daily Herald. This evening, they will each receive a certificate from Board of Education President, Mr. LaFever, to honor their achievement. Each of our students has selected a sponsor here, who has joined them this evening, who will introduce them. Sponsors, please follow this order. First, from Framed High School is Principal Kurt Teniper. Next is Conant High School Science Teacher, Lauren Peeper. And from Palatine High School is English teacher and cross-country coach, Chris Quick.
It's my pleasure to address the Board to recognize Megan Jong. And I want to see, Megan couldn't be here tonight. Were any of her family able to make it? Okay. I didn't think I saw. You may remember Megan from one of her previous appearances. Saturday Night Live has a Five-Timers Club. Megan was here six times for things like a Presidential Scholar, National Merit Scholar, perfect SAT, math team, and the list goes on. There are just a couple of other things that I want to say academically, some statistics that I have on Megan. One is that it takes 20 credits in District 211 to graduate high school, and she's graduating with 30. District 211 wants every student to graduate with the power of 15, that is 15 college credits, when they graduate from high school. Megan is graduating with 58, so she almost quadrupled it. And the one thing that I would just like to say about Megan's academic prowess is that those are normally pursuits for her own self-improvement, and it's not just for the sake of having high marks. And that comes out through Megan's personality. And if you remember, last month, Martin Zachariah presented her and talked about her smile. And today, you have to put up with my smile instead of Megan's smile. So, I just want to congratulate Megan Jong for her academic team recognition through the Daily Herald. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lauren Peeper, and tonight, I want to introduce you to someone very special. This is Sarav right next to me. I've been lucky enough to get to know Sarav over his past four years of high school. While a student at Conant, Sarav has participated in math team, health occupation Students of America, or HOSA, scholastic bowl, science Olympiad, student council, and worldwide youth in science and engineering, otherwise known as WISE. In all of these activities, Sarav has excelled and received various awards. He's also actually been here before as well. I personally met Sarav his freshman year, so I have known him all four years he's been here at Conant. And I met him while he was participating in WISE. As a freshman, Sarav did so well on the biology test that he made it to state and ended up in third place while he was still taking biology. So he hadn't even finished the course material yet, and he placed third in state, which is pretty amazing. For Sarav's remaining three years in the WISE program, he made it to sectionals every year and to state one more time. I'm going to miss having Sarav as a leader and all-around positive role model for the rest of his team. This year, I actually also had the honor of having Sarav in my advanced placement chemistry class, and it allowed me to get to know him on a whole different level. Watching Sarav in class is actually really amazing. He works really hard every day. Every day, he knows he's got certain material to learn, and he makes sure he learns it, and whatever is asked of him, and he always goes above what's asked of him anyways. He also always took the time to help those around him. If he saw any of his friends or classmates struggling, he would jump in and try to help them re-explain it in another way until they finally understood it. He wouldn't give up on that either. And what I think is so special about Sarav is he really likes to learn for the fact of learning. If you look at his GPA, it's super high, his grades are really high. But if you get to know Sarav, Sarav likes to know things just to be able to learn, which is really amazing as well. It's a rare quality, like I said, among a lot of students, and I know it's going to help him succeed in college and beyond that. I want to congratulate Sarav on earning a place on the Daily Herald Academic Team. It's quite an honor, and I know it couldn't have been awarded to a more deserving student. Good luck next year in Penn State, Sarav. I know we're going to miss you at Conant.
Sarav?
Hello, everybody. My name's Chris Quick. I'm an English teacher at Palatine High School. I'm here with John Wong, and then his mom and dad, Helen and Kevin Wong, are here as well. Like them to stand up and be recognized. Okay, so where to begin? I first met John because he was in my homeroom at Palatine High School. And I'd heard this rumor among other kids that there was this really superstar math student coming in to Palatine High School that was way out of his grade. And then he just happened to be in my homeroom. And over a slow process of getting to know him in homeroom and then being able to have him in my advanced placement English language class junior year, and I was just so pleasantly blown away when I met him because he was so much more interesting than just a math student, which is kind of the rumor that preceded him. And so, I'll give you some context. I read this book last week by author David Epstein called Range. And it basically makes an argument that specialization in any one thing is detrimental to people's careers and progress as thinkers and humans. That really what we should be after is well-rounded people. And it is such a pleasure to know that John has the habits of mind of a well-rounded person. He's inquisitive, he's curious, he's humble, he's gracious. Those are the kinds of qualities I love to have in a student. Not just somebody who could do any one thing in a class, but somebody who can contextualize the thing they're doing in any class with everything else they're doing. And I'll give you an example. We were crafting a research paper for junior year where John was writing about the inability of artificial intelligence to mimic the human mind, right? And we had this semester-long discussion about the limits of formal systems to describe chaotic things like human emotion. This is what we talk about in homeroom each day. And it's such a pleasure to deal with thinkers on that level. And John, I think, typifies what I see as an ideal student. Somebody that isn't just studying for grades, somebody that isn't just memorizing the plug-and-chug, but is actually genuinely interested in the human world and all the things that come with it. So, he's going to major in neuroscience and philosophy next year at Harvard, and I can't think of a more fitting combination of the things that I know of from you. And I'm just so proud to have gotten to know him. I'm going to really miss you next year. I have to have freshmen in my homeroom next year, so we'll see how that goes. All right, thanks.
This time, I'd like to ask Tim Daniel to come forward to stand by the podium. Tim came to High School District 211 in 2008 when he was named the Boys Water Polo Head Coach at Conant High School. Since that time, he has led the Cougars to 299 victories. Just one more to go. His teams have earned two Mid-Suburban League Conference titles, three sectional championships, and a fourth-place state finish in 2018. Tim's hard work has not been overlooked, as he was named Sectional Coach of the Year a total of five times. This evening, we recognize Tim for being named as the National Federation of State High School Association's 2018 Illinois Coach of the Year for Boys Water Polo. This honor recognizes Tim as a leader and a role model at the interscholastic level. Congratulations on your success, Tim, and for this award. Thank you for all that you have done for Conant High School and District 211. I have been to your matches, and I will say that you have your kids all play together, and it is a pleasure to watch. So congratulations. Please come forward for a certificate.
All right. It's nice to have the opportunity to recognize everyone for their accomplishments. At this point, we're going to take a five-minute break and allow you to get some pictures if you'd like before we continue on with the business portion of our meeting. And come back to order. The next item of business tonight is citizen appearances and presentations. Is there anyone here tonight that did not get a chance to sign up that would like to address the Board? All right, that will bring us to our next item of business. We have Palatine Township Supervisor Sharon Langlots-Johnson and Women's Club of Inverness President Karen Spearing.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Lori Lindberg. I'm the Outreach Coordinator for Palatine Township. This is Karen Spearing for the Women's Club of Inverness.
And former 211 teacher. Retired.
So Sharon couldn't make it tonight, so I'm here on her behalf. And we're here, it's mostly for our Apple Tree campaign. It's where we supply our needy families within the township with their school supplies. We do K through ninth grade. And our incoming freshmen, part of the deal is that they get their iPad insurance paid for. So along with the Women's Club of Inverness, we do a grant. They issue us a grant, and then we match the grant. So, we just want to present this check for $4,000 for the iPad insurance for the kids.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item of business, we have a public hearing on the inter-fund transfer educational fund to the operations and maintenance fund. We have our first suggested motion that the public hearing on the authorization of a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $2 million from the school district's educational fund to its operations and maintenance fund is now open. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, so the motion carries, so the hearing is now open. Is there anyone who would like to address the Board on this matter? All right, then we have a suggested motion that the public hearing on the authorization of a permanent inter-fund transfer in the amount of $2 million from the school district's educational fund to its operations and maintenance fund is now closed. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
All those in favor? Aye. And the hearing is now closed. That will bring us to our consent agenda.
Prior to the motion being made for the consent agenda, I request that Item A, Approval of Minutes Regular Meeting of May 23, 2019, be removed from the consent agenda for further discussion.
All right, so Item A, we'll set that aside for the moment. And then the motion is for the consent agenda Items B through K only. for the consent agenda items B through K only. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. So now, we will have a suggested motion for Item A, the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of May 23, 2019. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion.
Under announcements on page 11 of the minutes, it says, "President Burke thanked the board members for attending events at the school." I believe that should say someone different than President Burke, if I'm not mistaken?
That would be accurate, yes. Yeah.
Okay, so that is my own. And then, under Closed Session, it says that Mrs. Klimkowitz made a motion, seconded by Mr. Young, that the Board of Education enter Closed Session, and it says, "Everyone voted aye except Mr. Dombrowski. He voted nay," and I'm questioning whether or not that's accurate to enter Closed Session.
I believe that that is.
That was accurate.
It was. All right. Those are my questions and concerns regarding the minutes. Thank you.
All right, so the minutes will be updated for the change that was noted, and then can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. That will bring us to Special Reports. First, we have our Freedom of Information Act requests. Any questions about these? All right, next item of business is our Workers' Compensation Insurance Program. Any questions about this information? That will bring us to the 2019-2020 Tentative Budget Transportation and Municipal Retirement Social Security Funds. Any questions here? All right, that will bring us to the Post-Bond Issuance Compliance Report. Any questions about this? And finally, we have the Illinois High School Association Letter of Appreciation and Recognition for us. All right, that will bring us to Unfinished Business. First item here, we have Resolutions Directing Inter-Fund Transfers for Capital Improvement Projects and Life Safety Projects. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolutions providing for inter-fund transfers of $2 million from the Educational Fund to the Operations and Maintenance Fund, and then from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund effective July 1, 2019; the transfer of $3 million from the Operations and Maintenance Fund to the Capital Projects Fund after July 1, 2019; and the transfer of $3 million from the Working Cash Fund to the Life Safety Fund effective after July 1, 2019. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion here.
This'll be, I know it says after July 1st, but we can anticipate that these funds will be immediately placed in there, or will it be six months later? Or just want a clarification as to how far after July 1st?
Yeah, immediately after, so that we...
They will be transferred as they become necessary, so it will be during the fiscal year. Some may be transferred immediately, but depending on what the need and when the expenses incur, that's when we would make the transfer into the specific fund.
So any time, then? There's no real set date? Because it's kind of hard to track, you know, if we're hitting our marks or not, if funds stay in the education fund and then they don't, you know?
They would be very, they would be close to that date because of the majority of the expenses taking place this summer with the capital projects and the life safety projects.
I think your question is surrounding the earlier discussion we had at a previous meeting about the move over and the charting of it in the budget.
Yeah, because I don't want to get to December and track invariance if we're way off, and it's because it's still sitting there six months that, you know, because it's hard to, you know, track that.
Correct.
You know, then again, the variance reports don't really have any meaning to me if it's something we approved six months ago and we're not gonna act on it.
Yeah, so the action that we took was responsive exactly to that, was to move them over after July 1 to show them in the budget plan for the upcoming school year, as opposed to the end-of-June transfer.
Right, okay, so then these will be effective relatively earlier.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Just to clarify a little, and I can appreciate the concern, I don't want to distract from the most appropriate way to operate the finances of the district, to accommodate accounting mechanisms. The most important thing is that the people who use the information, being the board members, understand what information it is that we're looking at and then use it accordingly, as opposed to driving a financial behavior for the purposes of making all the numbers line up all the time. So I don't want to distract from your point, which is very, very important, but the understanding of the information we're looking at, I would say, is the primary thing, not to drive a financial behavior that doesn't serve a good financial purpose, but rather a way of looking at things.
And as a community representative, I can probably guess that you would appreciate that transparency is very important, and open-ended dates for transfers do not help any advocacy towards transparency and clarification to the people that are following and reviewing these things as well.
That's true, but we can help transparency by helping people understand what's happening, because there are good reasons to transfer funds, and we should do it for those reasons. But that doesn't make it more transparent just because you do it way too soon.
Again, there's just an open-ended date there. I was just trying to clarify that.
Yeah.
You know, whether this happens sooner or in 12 months, it becomes confusing trying to, and again, when you approve something and then you have a board turnover, we approve things that may not have happened that were done under the other board, so it's just easier if the actions kind of follow the intent.
We want to do the right thing for the right reason at the right time, not because it's easier. And we should communicate that information to people transparently, so they understand why we do the things we do when we do them. All right, if there's nothing further here, roll call, please.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye. Next item of business is the Superintendent's Search Process. For some introductions here, I'll turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Cates.
We're very pleased to have with us two firms tonight who are going to present information to you. You have a proposal from each of the firms in your materials. You have Dr. Jane Westhold from Hazard Young &amp; Tia, along with Dr. Max McGee, who's gonna present information from us first from Hazard Young &amp; Tia. Very thankful for you to come tonight to present information about the upcoming search that we'll be conducting, and at that point, I'll hand it over to you all and to the board.
Great, thank you. Well, first, I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share the celebration with your students tonight. Our firm is sponsoring a conference on student voice, so my day started hearing from some extraordinary students in the tri-state area, and here at the end of the evening, it's sharing in these remarkable achievements of these young men and young women, and it certainly makes your board work worthwhile. I know that for a fact, so we appreciate that. But it also reminded me of how important it is to have the leader, who's just the perfect fit with District 211, that not only serves these students, but all your students every day. And we are committed to finding that perfect leader with you, not for you, with you, because our role is to work with you and help facilitate a process that will bring you the right person at the right time for the right job. And so what we'd like to do tonight is, as you can tell, I am not Chris Nacastro, but I would like to introduce Jane Westerhold to you. I'm going to just talk a little about what's in our handout and turn it over to Jane. I think you all have a folder at this point. And I am not Chris Nacastro. She is vacationing with her children and grandchildren in Lake of the Ozarks and sends her regrets. And my children and grandchildren are in Crystal Lake and Round Lake respectfully, so I guess I'm vacationing from them tonight because they spend a lot of time with us in the summer. But Chris, as you know, did your strategic plan, or helped facilitate your more recent strategic plan. She's excited about working with you and for you. And Jane, I'll let you introduce yourself right now, and then let me come back to the packet, and then I'll turn it over to you for the presentation.
Good evening, Jane Westerhold. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm a resident of 211 since 1991. My daughter and son-in-law are both graduates of Connet High School, and I worked several years in District 54 as an administrator, so I have strong roots here and a lot of pride. When Max asked me if I would be interested, I said absolutely. If there's anything I'd rather do on a search is be a part of my own community that I value so much, and we're so fortunate to live in a community where we have a Board of Education and a community that truly values education and puts it at the forefront. I'm just starting out a board meeting like we saw tonight. That's the way it ought to be. So thank you for having us tonight.
Great. And another reason Jane and I wanted to come this evening, we were recently finished the two most recent searches of our firm in high-achieving, highly affluent school districts with high expectations. While both were out of state, Wyoming City, Ohio, outside of Cincinnati, and I chaired the Glendale, California, search, we learned a great deal. We learned so much from every search, and we are eager to learn from you as well, as we really spent time interviewing individual board members, as we spent time with focus groups, as we spent time, as Jane says, she lives here. I drive through here from Barrington to Schaumburg every day, and my grandson has played lacrosse. His first game was against Palatine High School this year, and Palatine High School won. So he reminded me of that this evening. But what I wanted to do in your packet, you have on the left was really our presentation, and we want to be respectful of your time. We're not going to go through it in any detail. You can read it, look at it at your leisure. On the right side, we have our sample community survey, what the report looks like. We do also do custom surveys, so if you are interested in a custom community survey, we will do those as well. We have the third-party background check, the Baker-Ubanks brochure, and then we have our formal proposal. So those are your materials. But I think I'd like you to hear from Jane, because she will be working with Chris on this search. So over to you, Jane.
Well, I know you have all that information, and you've probably read a lot of it, so I don't want to go in great detail because we want to allow you time for questions. I've never been in front of a Board of Education on a search that didn't have questions, so I would expect that. Basically, our search process involves four phases, and the first phase is the engage phase, and you're more or less starting it right now. But what really kicks that off is the planning meeting, and Chris and I would want to start immediately. For example, if you wanted the end of October to be the selection time for your new superintendent, we would definitely want to start right away in July and spend the month of July in engagement phase. And that engagement phase would include community surveys. We have online research-based survey. We would interview all of the board members, staff. We would interview students, community representatives, and have focus groups. And those focus groups would be determined by you at our first planning meeting, which would really help us define the parameters of this search. I've always thought that the most difficult part of the planning meeting for the board was the calendar. You're all busy people, so it's really hard to nail down those dates, but it's critically important. At that point, we would also begin our interview process. Once we have developed a leadership profile and desired characteristics, we would present that to the Board of Education, and the desired characteristics would be posted, and that really helps us in our recruiting efforts, so that we match candidates with your expectations. We would move on from the engage phase to the recruitment phase, and that's when we do all the advertisements, and that's when we talk with our associates. We're really blessed in HYA for over 30 years. We've been leading national superintendent searches and one of the leaders in the country, and so we have over 100 associates all over the country. So when we have a search, we call on them and say, "Do you have someone that would match these desired characteristics that you're aware of?" So we would screen all those, we would interview, and then we would get to the point where we're ready to go into the selection phase by presenting a slate of candidates to the Board of Education. And you get to decide how many people you would like to see. Some boards do five, some do seven. It's all up to the board. And then we would also plan on guiding you through that whole process, helping you with interview questions, and pretty much holding your hand if you needed us to, but anything that we could do to help serve you in that capacity, we would be there. And then we move into the transition stage, and in this transition phase, we're really doing exactly what it says. We're transitioning, we're announcing the superintendent, planning celebrations for the new superintendent, and working with you on anything you would want subsequent to that.
And so I think that's our process in a nutshell, and we, again, we want to be respectful of your time and answer any and all of your questions. Thank you, Ms. President.
Great, thank you, yeah. Questions?
Thank you for that presentation, and good evening. I have a couple of questions around the project manager role. First, can you explain to me what the role and responsibilities are of the project manager that would be working our search? And secondly, my question regards to, is regarding how you have identified Danielle as an appropriate individual to be assigned to our project?
Sure, I think I'll take that one. The project manager works in the back office, so they are the people that take care of making sure that, for example, the surveys get posted, the results. We try to turn around the results in 24 hours. So by project manager, she really makes sure that the logistics are scheduled. She helps with scheduling the interviews and the screening. Most of our initial interviews, if they're in-state or in the area, they'll come into the office, we'll meet with them face-to-face. But, for example, when we did the Glendale, California, search, we had individuals from nine states that we interviewed, and so we had to do most of those with video conference. So the project manager really helps keep things moving. And why Danielle? Because she's, we have two people in the office, and both of them are busy. We divide up, try to divide up the work equally.
Could you share with me her background regarding working on searches such as this?
I would love to. She was, helped me in Glendale, so that was a district of 26,000 students. It was a unit district, but they did have four high schools there, so we went off really without a hitch. She helped manage the board portal for that, so that's where we post, so the board members can see all the applications and all the paperwork. And we actually, for our board portal, use the Google Drives, and she helped manage that and would help if a board member had trouble accessing it. She would take care of that. She helped me make sure everything got uploaded in time. We send out weekly messages to the board, just an update. She will help get those out the door as well. So I mean, I've worked with her personally now for a year and a half, and I think the world of her.
Okay, and not to belittle her in any way.
Yeah.
Just a good understanding that her administrative experience and background would be very useful in this role, and that the information you provided gave great background on the leadership.
Right.
But it didn't provide much background on Danielle, and with that, I think that's kind of an important role, and so that's why I was asking.
That's a great question. That makes me think we ought to do this in future proposals, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to know more about how you entice people to participate with the survey. So how do you make sure that you get as many responses from various stakeholders in the community as possible?
Do you want to talk about how you do that, and then I can share a little bit too?
Well, typically, we work with your school community relations individual, and, you know, we would have it on your website, we would have it on our website, we would do it in every possible way. We would do it through parent groups, booster clubs, band org. We really try to hit everybody, particularly staff and families in the community. And we've, to give you an example, this search I just did in Wyoming, Ohio, we had 1,000 responses, which it was a K-12 district, but I thought that was phenomenal.
And how many students are in it? 2,000 or something?
Yeah, they're under 5,000 students.
So my next question would be, the only way to participate in the survey is if you have internet access. Is that right? It's an online survey only?
Yeah.
That is correct, but there have been communities, not one that I've worked in, that ask if we would set up something so that parents that didn't have access could use it, and they have utilized like a back-to-school night or something like that. So I mean, we could arrange something like that if you so desired. It's been done.
And we do translate it. And we do translate it into Spanish and Mandarin and any other language as well. We translate into Armenian for a search, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right.
I just want to say that I hope you feel or share or felt, anyway, the energy and enthusiasm to work with you. You know, we pride ourselves on expertise and experience, but really, I think it's the energy, enthusiasm, and as you heard Jane, we can't wait to get started. So, we look forward to working for you and with you and really appreciate your time tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And thank you for what you do and your volunteering for our community. We appreciate it as a citizen.
Yeah, I'm going to wait, introduce him until he's here.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right. This is Dr. Gary Zabilka, who's here from School Exec Connect. So, Gary, a pleasure to have you with us tonight and I'll turn it over to you. You can share whatever thoughts you have and then the board may have some questions, likely.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Cates. Well, first of all, on behalf of School Exec Connect, thank you for having us here and for the opportunity to share with you our process. I have a colleague of mine who is unfortunately not able to make it here tonight, Dr. Harry Rossi, and he gives his best, wishes he could be here, but he's pleased to say that he's enjoying vacation right now. So, I am the one that's grateful for being here. A little bit about School Exec Connect. School Exec Connect is a firm that's been around for about 15 years at this point, 15 or 16 years. It was formed by a number of retired superintendents who all basically worked for different search firms. And they were all friends, they were all colleagues, they got together and they said, "We think we can come up with a better model and a better process for working with school districts to find quality superintendents for districts." Hence, School Exec Connect was formed and developed in 2004, right here in Highland Park, Illinois. And we have over 60 associates nationwide. The majority of them are in the Midwest region, but we also extend to the coasts, the south, the north. We've got associates throughout the country. My background, again, Gary Zabilka, is that I'm a retired superintendent. I was a superintendent in Morton Grove School District for 10 years. Prior to that, I was in Downers Grove for a short stint as a superintendent, not because of anything I did. It's just because it was a short-term position with that particular district. I am currently a Field Services Director for the Illinois Association of School Administrators, which is the state's superintendents association. And in that capacity, I basically work with new superintendents and provide mentoring and coaching services for them and provide professional development for them. In fact, after this meeting, I'll be heading to Springfield where we'll be having our superintendent's School of Advanced Leadership program. We've got 25 students from across, students, superintendents from across the state who are basically looking to further hone their skills as superintendents. And we'll spend the weekend and then meet again several more times throughout the next two years. I share those things with you just to demonstrate our involvement. And when I say our involvement, all of our associates have remained extremely active in our profession. We believe that schools are truly the future and the hope for society. I know that sounds relatively deep, but at the same time, if you were to take a look, and it's in our materials, as our credo, we believe primarily that we serve students first and foremost. It was exciting for me to sit back here and watch how you recognize so many students this evening and, you know, that has to bring great pleasure to you as a board and as a district to know the great things that you're providing for students, for them to excel and achieve at their various strengths and qualities that they have. Basically, we define our success as a firm by the longevity of the leaders that we place. We are extremely proud and pleased of the fact that those superintendents that we have placed in these several hundreds searches that we've done in those 15 or 16 years, that they have been extended a second contract as a superintendent. And many of those have been extended even more than a second contract. We've got, on paper, it's a 96% placement rate. But realistically, Dr. Rossi and I were comparing our own personal notes and we have not seen any of the superintendents that we've placed in searches that we've done together. We haven't seen any of them leave or be dismissed from their placements. I say that, you know, with great angst only because it only takes one and I won't be able to say that anymore, but at the same time, very proud and pleased of the fact that we work extremely hard for the district to ensure that we are providing the best quality candidates available and those that match your district. It's interesting, if we can compare baseball managers, there's many great baseball managers that are out there, just as there are many great superintendents that are out there. However, there are only certain superintendents that will match your district, that will basically fulfill those things that District 211 is proud of, that you stand for, the things that are part of your culture, and those are the things that we are most pleased about, that we dive deep in the conversations that we have with potential candidates to ensure that we are truly providing for you the best possible candidates. I can talk a little bit about our process. I realize we have a limited amount of time. I know you have our materials, but I'll just highlight a couple of the pieces that we do as a part of our process. First of all, the planning meeting, we consider to be very important as a board looking to hire your next chief executive officer. We believe that you'd like to know the full scope and breadth of this search. We talk right then and there about timeline. We believe in starting with the end in mind, in other words, when would you like to have a superintendent named by? And we do backwards mapping, to use an educational term. We start, when would you like to name the superintendent? And then we start planning our dates backwards from there. This is the prime time of the year, if you will, to host a search for your next superintendent. This way, we could have a superintendent named, you can have a superintendent named by as late as December, possibly November, and even October if that was the board's desire. Again, we determine those things in planning, in a planning meeting, and look at all of the dates that the board would need to be actively involved in, and then the dates that Dr. Rossi and I would work with you on in providing information, both to the public and how we would engage your community. Speaking of engaging the community, as a group, we provide focus groups for teachers, staff members, administrators, parents, anybody who is interested. We provide those opportunities for them to come in and share their thoughts as to what they would like to see in their next superintendent. We also provide the opportunity, if the district would like, is to have an online survey for those who may not be able to attend a meeting in person whereby they can share their thoughts based on this survey. And we collect the data from the online survey as well, from the focus groups. We present that to you as the board and say, "This is all of the information that we gleaned from these meetings." And we create what we call a superintendent profile. Upon getting all of that information, you can take a look at the profile and say, "Is this the profile of what we'd like to see in our next superintendent?" If it's not, we have that conversation. If it is and it needs to be tweaked a bit, we have that conversation. But for the most part, that's then what we utilize when we then begin screening candidates, recruiting candidates. And I should mention that piece as well because a district like yours may be one in which you may be best served by someone who is already a superintendent, possibly somebody who has experience that could work with you with their background experience, again, depending upon what the superintendent's profile would say. We are fortunate enough to do the last search for your district that brought Dr. Cates into his role. And, you know, thereto, in customizing these searches, if you have internal candidates or you have specified timelines that you'd like to follow, you just let us know as your consultants and we're more than glad to accommodate that, as well as provide our expertise in helping you find the best possible candidates. Beyond that, I will say that the process with regard to us screening and vetting candidates, we would not bring any candidates to the board as possible candidates for your position without meeting them face-to-face first. We don't just simply do screen interviews or not even just Skyping interviews, but we literally meet the candidates face-to-face. We do a full service of vetting candidates and checking their backgrounds to ensure that candidates that we bring forth to you will be candidates that you not only will be proud of and will highly respect, but that there are no surprises with anything that may be in their background. Again, we pride ourselves with that as well in that we haven't had that occur with our firm with the searches that we have done because of our diligence. Beyond that, we also then work with the board with your interviewing techniques to whatever extent you would like. We recognize many of you are in situations and professions whereby you may have interviewed candidates before and, you know, we don't want to share anything with you that you already know, but at the same time, if you'd like us to work with you as far as interviewing is concerned, we're more than glad to do that. Basically, we consider ourselves to be a full-service firm. We will take you from the very start to the very finish, as well as even stay in contact then with those candidates after they've been hired to make sure that they are successful for you. So, in that few minutes, I've tried to share an overview of what our firm provides. I hope that's adequate information for you at this point and I'd be more than glad to entertain any questions that you may have for me.
Questions?
I do have a question. You spoke about mentoring the new superintendents. Can you talk about that a little bit? What exactly do you cover and?
Sure. And that happens in a variety of different ways. There are districts that hire mentors for their superintendents. There are people that have worked in their district that they say this person would serve as a good mentor for you. We basically recommend utilizing the services of the Illinois Association of School Administrators. They offer a mentoring service. That's also part of my other role. It's not really part of School Exec Connect. But what we do in that regard is we try to cater to the needs of that superintendent. First of all, if they are interested and aware, it can become as close as a one-to-one mentorship whereby we meet on a regular basis, whether it be monthly, quarterly, et cetera, and talk about some of the significant challenges and/or things that are going well for them, things that we can help them with and/or assist them. The other way that we do it is we also meet in small groups at times. And with that, if we have two or three new superintendents, often in a region, oftentimes it's beneficial for them to get together, to hear some of the challenges that they're going through, so they not only learn from each other, but then they also do it with an experienced superintendent or a couple of other experienced superintendents with them. So, that's pretty much what the mentoring piece looks like.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
I have a couple of questions. Hi, thank you for coming this evening. Nice to meet you. What, if any, might be your recommendation for possible overlap of our current and the new superintendent? That's one question I have.
Overlap by hiring the new superintendent prior to the departure of your current superintendent, since he's right here in the room, we'll say Dr. Cates.
And potential mentorship associated.
Absolutely. What would be our opinion of that? Again, if the district felt that that would be beneficial. Again, with the history that you have here with Dr. Cates, the experience of being in a district, I can't see that that would be detrimental. However, there is a certain point, and I'm just going to say it like it is, with all due respect, Dr. Cates, there is a time when the new superintendent has to leave, or when the former superintendent has to leave. So, I think it needs to be clearly outlined from the outset and I think that there should be, there's a, what I'd call a fine line as to when one may be overstaying and/or overstepping one's role. And in that case, I think as a board, you too would want to be sensitive to that.
With your experience in doing these searches and superintending, what, do you have a recommendation as to a certain timeline or anything like that associated to that?
Being asked the question, I feel an obligation to respond directly and I would say that if a, well, first of all, again, depending upon where the new superintendent was coming from, chances are they may not be able to start prior to July 1st, only because of previous contractual obligations. Also, with contract obligations, I'm not sure where we stand with Dr. Cates and we don't need to get into that piece, but chances are with contracts that they would end June 30th typically unless it were extended for a couple of months. What I would recommend, if it were possible, would be to extend Dr. Cates for anywhere from 30 to 60 days, the summer period. I think it's important that once that school year begin, that the new superintendent be flying solo, so to speak, and that he knows, he'll have full authority from July 1 on, hopefully, but that he would have the benefit of Dr. Cates' history, expertise, and knowledge in making that transition.
Thank you. And with so many very successful placements, are you allowed or able to recruit those same individuals that you may have placed elsewhere?
That's an excellent question and you'll want to know as a board that we do have a policy regarding not recruiting candidates that we've placed. We've changed the terminology on that. As far as the period of time, I believe it's through their first contract that we will not recruit candidates through their first contract.
So, that may be great for recruiting pursuits. Should they come to you or to us expressing interest, does that hold the same contractual obligation?
Someone has done their homework very well. It does not. If someone comes to us, it is an open market. We view it that way. And again, we respect our own firm's guidelines on that and hold firm to that, no pun intended with the words. But at the same time, if candidates come to us, we recognize that they may have dreams, desires, and pursuits of certain districts, of which I would think this could be one of those for outstanding candidates. And we would strongly consider them to be a part of the process if they so chose or if they came to you and you let us know of those candidates.
Thank you. We hope that we are that encouraging and enticing to other individuals too.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your answers.
You're welcome.
Can you provide some more detail on how you create the precept of the profile of the superintendent? Do you weight different aspects, the surveys, board input? How would you weight them? How would you put together, "Here's a profile of what we think you are looking for"?
Sure. Actually, as we do this, what we look for that comes out in the profile are the trends. The trends that we see consistent amongst all of the groups. In other words, we'll see that amongst board members, even though board members have a very different perspective. Our experience has been that we will see some of those same traits and characteristics that they're looking for in their next leader. We'll hear those same things from administrators. We'll hear those same things from parents and community members. Do board members get extra weight? Typically, if we're hearing things consistently from board members, it is the board who will be hiring these candidates. So, basically, there shouldn't be any surprise that if board members in particular have certain characteristics that they're looking for, that those won't come out in a profile.
They would come out.
That they would, yeah. In other words, yeah, the likelihood of them not being there is almost impossible. Sure, you're welcome.
About how many focus groups are part of the process?
That's, again, another good question as I consider the size of your district with five good-sized high schools and, you know, alternative schools and so on. Typically, and again, this isn't a typical district, you're the largest high school district. district in the state, typically, we do anywhere between eight and 10 for a district. We'd probably have to expand that. What our hope is, is that we would make sure that we provide as many opportunities for your district as possible. And if that requires more, which it may very well require more, our commitment to you is that we'll do that. The proposal lists a price that is all-inclusive with regard to focus groups. If there are more focus groups, it does not change the price. We're more than glad to do what we need to do in order to get the appropriate amount of feedback in those focus groups, so that we can be assured of the fact that we're hearing the right information from the right people.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, and again, on behalf of School Exec Connect, we thank you for the opportunity, and best of luck to you in your decision-making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've heard both presentations, and for the last couple of months, we've had available what their general proposals from each. So we should probably provide to Dr. Kates some guidance on how to continue moving this forward.
So what exactly are you asking? Which one we prefer, or tell us what you're asking?
Yeah, I think we need to get a contract from one of them, and we're on a pretty tight timeline. We're a little bit behind what we've done in the past, and so I think Dr. Kates will have to reach out to one of them and bring them back to begin the process by getting a contract and starting the, you know, interview sessions with the board to develop whatever criteria they're going to use to begin the search process. Compare and contrast the two.
Well, based, I'm not going to speak on behalf of each individual board member, but based on my research, my understanding, even my research beyond the proposals that they submitted, because I did some other things to prepare for this point, based on cost, similarity in processes and timelines, the resources and the staff of each organization, certainly the fact that they have worked with us before, and their other district references, I personally would like to recommend School Exec Connect as the firm that we utilize for this search.
That would be my preference also. Cost, I think the process is more robust, especially with the focus groups, and, you know, reflecting the proposals that we heard tonight, that would be my preference as well.
I think the detail presented by Exec was pretty crystal clear, didn't need slides. I think they know what they're doing. That would be my recommendation as well.
I would agree with that. I like his presentation. I believe they do a thorough job, and that would be my recommendation, too.
I agree with that also. I think having worked with them before, they were considerate, they did do the surveys, they gathered the information, they really worked with the board. I think they did an excellent job. I would not expect anything less from them.
I also personally liked that they insist on face-to-face interviews before those candidates come to the board, the video conferencing, although it's very useful, obviously, but they insist on face-to-face before representing with candidates. I think that that's a nice bonus, too.
I agree with that, yep.
So far, those are all pretty positive reasons? Were there any concerns about any of it? For people that haven't been through it before, I don't, it's kind of, you have to start somewhere, but I don't, I don't know.
From my perspective, you know, I feel like their reach might be a little bit limited, Exec Connect. I think that the other organization has a further reach, from what I understood, and they were able to tap into resources that live here within the community, that have experience as administrators, that kind of know what we're doing day-to-day. I thought that was an advantage, having that in-house. That was kind of something that I was thinking as I was watching both presentations. Somebody that's kind of living the community member life and knows what we're doing here.
So Mr. Dombrowski, is your recommendation then the?
I'm good with the majority of the board, which has already been stated. Thank you for asking.
All right. Do you want to then provide Dr. Kates the guidance to, first of all, confirm with us, get dates and times, schedule the next meeting, bring Exec Connect person back. At that point, they'll have to have a more formal contract, that we still have the opportunity to go through what it actually is, raise any questions, concerns, or have those things addressed, incorporated into the contract, but then basically begin as soon as possible after this point with moving forward with them.
So I make a motion to direct Superintendent Kates to engage in the contract.
If you want, before you do that, we can probably just give him the guidance to go do that, and then we don't, we won't actually have to make a motion until we have a contract the next time, and approve it then and go forward.
Do we have time for that?
Yeah, I think so, because they'll come back and they will have a contract. Yeah, I'm just looking to provide him guidance to go bring it back in a formal way, then we don't have to approve something.
Superintendent Kates, how quickly can this be done? I know time is of the essence.
Certainly, I believe the firm is well-equipped to put the wheels in motion very quickly to start taking actions and steps that would serve the board's purpose well.
Special meeting tomorrow?
So you'll have plenty of meetings, yeah.
If we were to make the motion tonight and Dr. Kates can then sign the contract, then we don't have to see the revised contract, and?
But we don't really have the.
We signed the contract. Right, we signed the contract. And we were looking at opening the search August. That was what we had in the outline here and in the recommendation.
And with?
Process begins with signing of the letter of agreement.
And I think with our next board meeting on the 18th, that that should allow ample time to get the contract, review it, finesse it or finite it, you know, finish it to then be able to present and propose it to us.
Does anybody see a need to increase that speed and get to it quicker? I do.
I think the question here is, what kind of timeline do we want to have a superintendent chosen? Are we looking at October? Are we looking at November? I mean, granted.
All these things are probably stuff that, some of the details that are going to crop up, that it would probably be best to, when the people come back, to have that initial meeting with the board to define some of those things, because people have different, will have different questions or concerns that are all important.
And I would add to that, if we want to do surveys, we've got to take in consideration that now people are going on vacation, the teachers really aren't available until the fall. When they start getting back into their class, their priority is to get ready for their classroom. So I think it's important that we get moving, however.
There will be some special meetings that come up, I'm certain, as a part of this. This won't just go on like with the normal board meeting schedule.
I mean, I'll just point out that in the proposal that they've submitted to us tonight, they have their opening the search process announced as August of 2019, and the first item that's listed there says letter of agreement. So it seems that, I mean, time is absolutely of the essence. I want to get the ball rolling, too, but it seems like, this doesn't signal to me that it is an emergency.
And that's with the timeline of selection of candidates in December.
Right, and I have expressed that we know that we're going to have a principal also retiring at the end of this year, and I, again, having replaced numerous administrators when I was appointed, to have that appointment earlier, I think will serve the district better.
Right, I was looking at October.
October, yes, I agree.
That was the recommendation, but if you guys want to hold till December and follow that timeline, I just think we can tell Dr. Kates that he can sign the agreement, and then we can work out the details with them and then get them started, so that at least if we have the contract in place, and if we have to do some adjustment to the contract after they've started, you know, whether it be an addendum to that or not, at least we have them engaged and started and developing these things, so we can hit October rather than December.
I think they'll do that as soon as Dr. Kates gives them a call on the phone, and it's just a matter of, you know, having the contract finalized when we're all together.
Okay, yeah, that's different. Most places I know don't start billing until they get something signed. Maybe LaFever and Associates operates differently. Where I'm at, they want a contract before they start invoicing.
I have a feeling that based on our history with this particular firm, that once they get the green light, so to speak, they'll start. I think one thing that I'd like to, I don't know if now and here is the right place to have this conversation, or wait until we further engage the firm, but one of the first things that they want to do, and this is both firms, is to designate who they have as partners within the district, from a board liaison to an administration liaison, to help them with representation and participation. So I don't know at what point we would need to, as a board, discuss and designate someone to be the board liaison to the firm in the process.
I'm trying to think back to, I think we focused everything through the board president, but anything else, it was the entire board that talked about things. I'm trying to recall that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was more, you know, our president remained as the main person for communicating and dealing with them. I know at the district office, I think it was Kathy Lingle who maybe kind of coordinated some of the focus groups or things of that nature. So we, as you said, we do have some history and some things that have been done in the past that seem to work, but maybe there's things that we can do to enhance it or streamline things a little bit better.
Sure.
You have enough direction tonight to move forward, though.
I do, and I think once the firm knows that they're selected, they'll have quickly be able to take effective action.
And they will definitely lead us through it, and answer any questions that we have and provide guidance.
With people with experience, is OMA going to get in the way of this? I mean, how is communication going to take place when we're, when we live under the constraints of OMA, where we can't really talk to each other unless it's at a board meeting?
And that's where it needs to take place, and for the superintendent search, we can do that in closed session, correct?
It is very common for numerous special meetings to be held, in addition to the regularly scheduled meetings.
Can communication come from the representative, if it's the board president, to the board members directly, or is that, we can't do that?
Right.
Okay.
The answer to that is no, I should verbalize that.
Yeah, yeah.
So no, it has to all follow the Open Meetings Act parameters throughout the entire sequence.
All right, so you have the direction that you need?
I do.
We will move on to our next item, which is the Board of Education protocols. So just to put some closure to this, I'm just going to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the revised Township High School District 211 Board of Education protocols as presented.
So moved.
I've moved that already. Would you like to second it?
I will second it.
All right, any discussion here? All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
That'll bring us to new business. First, we have the Health and Dental Program Claims Administration. The suggested motion is that the Board of Education continue the self-insured program for health and dental benefits for 2019, 2020, and retain Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide claims administration services for medical, dental, and utilization review, and further to purchase aggregate and specific stop-loss insurance from Blue Cross and Blue Shield at a level of $350,000 as presented. Can someone please move that?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion here. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
That brings us to our treasurer bond renewal. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education secure treasurer bonds for Barbara Peterson as school treasurer and Lauren Hummel as assistant school treasurer of Township High School District 211 in the amount of $15,248 per bond, total of $30,496.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion here.
Is that a one-time payment, or is that? Go ahead.
Lauren, you want to respond?
Well, I mean, do we keep paying $15,000?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, it is, it's a one-time payment for this bond, but then it is a renewal every year.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next item is the student yearbook vendor recommendation. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the recommendation by the selection committee at Palatine, William Fremd, James B. Conant, Schaumburg, and Hoffman Estates High Schools to select Jostens as their yearbook vendor. Further, that the contract period of three years be approved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who had it before, and what was the length of the contract, do we know?
Jostens was the previous vendor, and it was for three years.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
That motion carries. Next, we have the sale of surplus school property. Suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize the sale of used surplus lawn mowers and floor cleaning equipment by way of public sealed bid, public auction site, or company trade-in.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. In the proposal document we received, it says the old, regarding floor cleaning equipment, the old equipment ranges in age from 10 to 12 years, with conditions ranging from inoperable to poor. The old equipment will be taken out of service and either used for spare parts or disposed of. Therefore, my question is, should we be including floor cleaning equipment in this proposal? If it's not going to be disposed of by public sealed bid, public auction site, or company trade-in, but rather either disposed of or used for spare parts?
Yes, excuse me, the estimated value of at least one of the pieces of equipment was exceeded $300, and according to board policy, that, those pieces are brought to the board then for their condition to be reviewed prior to their disposal or their sale, and we will try to sell those for more than $300, whether it be for spare parts, or, but there may be others that we don't have luck in selling, but that's why it's being brought to the board tonight, is because at least one of the pieces is believed to have a value of more than $300.
So if any of these items are unable to be, do we set a minimum with which we require them to be valued at and bid or auctioned or traded in before we decide to dispose of them? And would that go in the case of any of these items?
We would set a minimum.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. That motion carries. Next, we have the Illinois Association of School Boards Resolution. Suggested motion that the Board of Education endorse the proposed resolution, and the proposed resolution be submitted to the Illinois Association of School Boards Delegate Assembly for consideration of its adoption into the Illinois Association of School Boards Position Statement Handbook.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. That motion carries. Next, we have potential topics for future discussion. All right, if we have none, that will bring us to our liaison and committee reports. First, we have Northwest Suburban Special Education Organization.
NSSEO will be meeting next Wednesday. There's a couple of, there's a new principal and a new administrator that will be starting, so there's going to be a little reception for them at 6 o'clock. Ms. Cavell is going to be able to, hopefully, be able to come to that meeting so she can kind of get a feel of, of what NSSEO is. And there will not be a meeting in July, so I will be able to report in July.
All right, next, we have EdRed.
And I have a report on EdRed. Okay, so that was my first time attending. After I finally found the right place to go to, it was good. They spoke about some of the bills that we've already gotten the information on, and the driver's ed, and the high school students filling out the FAFSA reports, protection of student data. They, they talked about those items. They also talked about the property tax freeze, and that Senate Bill 1932 creates a tax relief task force, and that report is supposed to be due in January, so we'll see where it goes with that. Let's see. Then there was a presentation from State Representative Chris Welch, and he came and he spoke again about what the legislators, legislation had done in regards to the budget and passing a variety of bills, as we know. They also talked about $53.65 million in property tax relief grants, and that we need to apply for those. He went on to talk about, briefly, about an interesting pilot program that $1 million has been put aside for mobile tolerance centers, which would be operated by this Simon Weston halt center. And these buses would go around the state and would teach children about tolerance, understanding of other cultures and people. So, it's, it's a pilot program that's going around, so we'll see how that goes. Also talked very briefly about that there's member initiative dollars, that senators and state reps will have some money that might be able to benefit their respective areas. So, that was, that was it. It was, it was interesting, and it'll be starting up then again August, fall, September, so in that area.
Mm-hmm.
So, all right, thank you.
All right, that will bring us to our Budget and Finance Committee report. On June 5th, we had our last Budget and Finance Committee meeting. The material covered was substantially similar to tonight's special reports. Item C, the 2019-2020 Tentative Budget Transportation and Municipal Retirement Social Security Funds. And that agenda and presentation from the meeting is still available online in the board docs as one of the meetings, if you want to review that material. All right, that will bring us to our Facilities Committee report.
Yeah, I just want to let the board members know how all the construction for the summer is going along. Currently, at Palatine High School, the football field, the turf is installed, and resurfacing of the track will begin next week. Completion of this project shall be completed by mid-July barring any weather issues. Hoffman Estates, the football turf installation will begin shortly, and, and right after that, the track will be resurfaced, and that should also be completed by the end of July. The bathroom renovations at Hoffman are about 40% complete, and it appears that it'll be, everything will be completed by August 1st. Conan, they just had a new HVAC unit put in for the kitchen and cafeteria, and will start oper, will be operational by next week. The fields and the baseball and softball fields over there at Conan are progressing nicely. The fences are up, the dugouts are complete. When I was out there, they were working on the infield. New sod and grass sitting will begin shortly, weather permitting. We should have substantial completion by the beginning of school year, and probably ready for use maybe a short time after that, assuming that the sod sets in properly. Miscellaneous roof and parking repairs at all the schools are moving along as scheduled. And I just want to mention that we're very fortunate at Palatine and Hoffman that the subsoils weren't like they were at Fremd and Schaumburg. I look at the football, the football games for seasons for both Palatine and Hoffman will begin on schedule with no real issues at hand.
Great, thank you. That'll bring us to our announcements. We have a short list of calendar items. And then finally, we have closed session. A suggested motion that the board will enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, the appointment, employment compensation, discipline of performance, or dismissal of specific employees, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, and the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the board return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Second. Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of John Kane effective June 2023, consistent with the Master Contract of District 211 Teachers Union, Joseph Kowalski effective May 2025, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, John Mozak effective May 2023, according to the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union, and John Woods effective June 2023, consistent with the Master Contract of the District 211 Teachers Union.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education authorize settlements in the pending workers' compensation matters as presented.
So moved. Second.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education hereby accept the sale of property at 12 North 475 Burner Drive, Elgin, to Martin and Maria Herrera for the amount of $455,000. Further, that the board authorize the superintendent to sign any documents for or on behalf of the board to consummate the sale.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education hereby accept the sale of the property at 155 East Glade Road, Palatine, to Jonathan S. Pope and Ashley E. Eneloski for the amount of $687,000. Further, that the board authorize the superintendent to sign any documents for or on behalf of the board to consummate the sale.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Young, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. We have a suggested motion that the Board of Education approve the terms of the tentative agreement reached between the Board of Education and the union leadership effective July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Young, aye. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye. And we have one 30-minute question to make sure we get to all out of the clock. Any other comments?
Just a real quick one. You, you were vague on which contract we were voting on, and you didn't offer opportunity for discussion, but next time, just make sure that we, we clarify that we're voting on the ONM contract when we're in open session. Thank you.
All right, if nothing else, we are adjourned.